Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees of Thursday, April 18th, 2024. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee March Osga.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also President Clerk Soul.
We have a quorum for tonight's meeting. For the President's Report, I'd like to start with a proclamation with a heavy heart but a gracious heart at the same time. I'd like to call Cook County Circuit Court Judge Chloe Pedersen to the podium to join me. We have a proclamation honoring Cook County Clerk Karen Yarborough. Whereas Karen Yarborough provided dedicated service to Cook County as the first black person and first woman Cook County Clerk for six years from 2018 to 2024, and recorder of deeds for six years from 2012 to 2018. And whereas during her tenure as county clerk, Yarborough served as a chief election officer for the county, oversaw various aspects of the property tax process, managed the annual public statement of economic interests and lobbyist registration process, maintained responsibility for safeguarding vital records, and served as clerk to the county board of commissioners. And whereas Yarborough is credited with implementing sweeping changes throughout the clerk's office, including a complete modernization of election voting equipment, enhancements to the voting process for suburban voters, and in 2020 oversight of a first-of-its-kind consolidation of all duties of the former Cook County Recorder of Deeds Office into the clerk's office. And whereas Yarborough also represented Maywood and served as an Illinois State Representative for the 7th District for 11 years from 2001 to 2012. And whereas Yarborough brought a unique spirit, energy, and compassion to her role in public service as a champion of women's rights and defender of the underprivileged. And whereas the Village of Riverside community, along with all communities throughout Cook County and the state of Illinois, express our heartfelt condolences to the family and loved ones of Yarborough. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Village Board of Trustees, do hereby express to Yarborough's family and loved ones our sincere condolences and appreciation for her outstanding service, support, and dedication to the Village of Riverside and Cook County residents. In witness hereof, I have set my hand and affixed the seal of the Village of Riverside this 18th day of April. Village President J. Douglas Pollock.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you all so very much. Some of you may not know, some of you may know, that Karen Yarborough was my aunt. I have with me her sister next in line in our family, so we're both here and graciously accept the proclamation and truly want to express our heartfelt thanks to all of you. She was a dedicated public servant for many years, opening doors, forging new paths, and always mentoring and bringing others along. I hope we can continue to honor her by continuing that work, and thank you all again for recognizing us. Thank you.
I would be remiss, too, if I did not mention former Village President Joe Ballerine, who was a good friend of Karen's and of Judge Pedersen's, and texted me upon Mrs. Yarborough's death saying that she was a valued friend of the Village of Riverside, and that means a lot, I know, to Joe. So thank you very much. Next on the President's Report, I'd like to bring up Riverside Brookfield High School science teacher David Monti. He is here this evening to talk about an ecology club initiative and their partnership with the Village of Riverside staff on their no-idling initiative. Mr. Monti, would you like to address the board and the village?
Thank you so much. First of all, I'm honored because there are two of my former students who are trustees. So very proud of you both. And I'm also very proud, I'm going to turn it over to the students because Eco Club for a long time has done many great things here in Cook County, but the last 15 years, I've really turned it over to them. It's their club. We've been doing restoration work for almost 40 years at Wolf Road Prairie and Wabonzie Woods, and that's kind of been our signature. But the last 10 years or so, the students every year come up with a project, come up with an idea, and I just kind of facilitate it and guide them. And so I have three of my officers with me tonight. I have Myanna Nelson, Hayden Mars, and Desi LaRocque, and so I'm going to turn it over for them and let them tell you about the initiative.
So I guess I'll speak first. I'm Desi LaRocque, and I'll just tell you like how we came up with this idea. So first of all, at the beginning of each year in Eco Club, we all just come together, collaborate, and find like one thing that we have, we see that is wrong in the community or that we want to change or we want to improve. And we noticed the surplus amount of cars in front of our school that are just sitting there idling, which idling is when you leave your engine on without like actually like running, like you're running your car without actually like using it to drive. And basically, we saw that, and these people who are picking up their students or waiting for student drop-off are just sitting out there for like 30 minutes, and over time that wastes a lot of money and that is bad for environment, and we can explain more about the effects of that.
Yeah, so it was really cool. We got to talk, present this to our Assistant Superintendent and our Principal and Assistant Principal to kind of come up with a solution for this. So we talked about the environmental, economic, and health impacts of idling on our community, on the students. And so after this presentation, we tried to come up with solutions, and our board offered to fund these signs, and they were up in a couple of weeks, which was really exciting to kind of see all of our work finally be put up. And so I'll let Hayden kind of do this.
And then I'd just like to add, on behalf of the students, we want to thank Mr. Monti and the administration for being so flexible and allowing us to hopefully create a legacy of environmental consciousness in this community. And it's not going to stop here. Next, we're looking in the coming years, obviously we'll be graduated, but in the coming years, we're looking to install solar panels on the roof of Riverside Brookfield, and those are the kind of initiatives that we like to promote, and we hope that the village and the various administrations involved in running this town, this community, will continue to help us promote. So that's all.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to thank the village because when we did our presentation and the administration was very excited about it, and then they said, but it's the village's land. And we were like, we forgot that. We were like, oh, wait a minute. But we reached out both to Brookfield and to Riverside, and the response was immediate and again, very supportive, and so we're very grateful. And now we're just, it's a matter of getting the word out so that people will turn off their cars while they're waiting to pick up their children. But thank you again for all your support.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Monti, and students in Riverside Brookfield High School. I would note that this is consistent with two of our strategic goals that we recently adopted, one being sustainability and addressing environmental impacts, the other being better communications, coordination, and support of our local school districts. So thank you. Next on the agenda, speaking of sustainability and environment, is a proclamation for Arbor Day. I'd like to just read this presidential proclamation into the record. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, purify the air and water by reducing pollution, and create plant and wildlife diversity, and whereas trees have been shown to reduce crime, increase property values, reduce heating and cooling costs, and conserve energy use, and whereas trees can beautify our parks and streets, improve the quality of our urban environment, and carry on the tradition planned by the inventive vision of Frederick Law Olmsted. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas the Village of Riverside plans to plant several white oak trees in the Scottswood Common area to celebrate as part of a volunteer landscape workday on April 27th, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that I, J. Douglas Pollock, Village President, proclaim the day of April 27th as Arbor Day in the Village of Riverside, and I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden their heart and promote the protection and care of trees within our community and woodlands. In witness hereof, I have signed this proclamation dated April 18th, 2024. So happy Arbor Day, everyone. Plant a tree. Just a couple of upcoming village meetings I wanted to note. April 27th is the Parks and Recreation Board meeting at the library, and April 24th is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at Town Hall in Room 4 of this same room. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I just have a couple of items this evening to report on, all Parks and Recreation-centric. Parks and Recreation has a couple of events coming up for the village. Family Bingo Night is on May 11th. We also have Riverside Ride, which is our annual family bike event that will be held on May 18th, but not only will that be held on the 18th, but also we have scheduled our annual fishing derby. Hopefully, the weather allows us to have it. Every year, there seems to always be, we have to delay it because of weather-related events. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that the river stays at a certain level so that we can have our fishing derby. Registration is not required for the Riverside Ride, but we encourage everyone to register for the bingo event and the fishing derby. The fishing derby is free of charge, but you actually do have to sign up for that item. And also, just a note to residents, that the summer recreation brochure is being finalized and will be online the week of May 6th. There's lots of classes and other fun events for residents and non-residents to sign up for, so sign up quickly because they typically sell out, which actually leads me to my final item, which summer camp, extremely popular this year. We hired more staff, and we had an extensive waiting list. However, through the partnership with District 96, we were able to move some kiddos around of where we have our programs typically to allow for more space so that we could increase our capacity. We were able to get almost everyone off our waiting list. We're still working with a couple that remain, but if there are residents that are interested, sign up, put yourself on the waitlist, because sometimes there are individuals that drop off right before, and so you may still have a chance. And staff really tries to accommodate all those that are on the waiting list. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Resident comments on non-agenda items. Everyone will be given an opportunity to address the board on agenda items, but this is an opportunity if you would like to comment on a village matter that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Clerk Soul, please read the consent agenda.
Ratify voucher list of bills, April 4th, 2024. Approve voucher list of bills, April 18th, 2024. Approve Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, March 21st, 2024. Review and file department reports. Police and Fire Department Annual Report, 2023. Fire, Police, and Finance, February 2024. Public Works, March 2024. Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report. Finance Quarterly Purchase Order Report. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Historical Commission Regular Meeting, February 19th, 2024. Parks and Recreation Board Regular Meeting, February 26th, 2024. Ad Hoc Sesquicentennial Planning Committee Regular Meeting, March 11th, 2024. Landscape Advisory Commission Regular Meeting, March 12th, 2024. Preservation Commission Special Meeting, March 13th, 2024. Historical Commission Regular Meeting, March 18th, 2024. Review and File Disc Golf Installation Update. A motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Village of Riverside and West Central Consolidated Communications regarding public safety communication equipment. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into various purchase orders for fiscal year 2024.
Would anyone like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee March Osga. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee March Osga.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Motion is approved. The consent agenda is approved. Department, Board, and Commission reports. Are there any departments, board, or commission reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to pending business. First item under pending business is Parks and Recreation Project Overview and Draft Survey Presentation by Barry Dunn. Director Malkyody will kick this off.
Good evening. President Pollock, village trustees, manager Francis. As you know, we are well underway in this multifaceted project with the first major aspect being the community survey. We're very excited about this project, as I'm sure the community is. We're also excited to introduce project manager Elsa Fisher and members of the Barry Dunn team. They're going to do a brief overview of the project, and they'll also be happy to answer any questions about the project itself and review of the survey, as well as the department. Elsa Fisher.
Thanks, Ron. Well, it's so appropriate that we're here on an evening when you are supporting students with a no-idling policy and honoring Arbor Day, so thank you very much to President Pollock and the trustees for having us on your agenda tonight. On behalf of Barry Dunn and Acuity and Hitchcock Design and Williams Architects, we very much appreciate and thank you for the opportunity to work for you and to work with the staff on this exciting project. Next slide, Ethan. We know you have a lot of other agenda items. We're going to go through this relatively quickly tonight, but there'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions. We're going to talk about project goals, go through the project phases so you understand the full scope of the project. Jeff from Acuity is going to talk through the process of the survey. Steve from Hitchcock Design is going to talk about the park assessments, the open space assessments, and the facility assessments that actually Williams Architects is going to do, and Williams has worked for you before. Frank Prese couldn't make it tonight. I'll talk a little bit about the recreation assessment and what we're going to do to look at recreation programs. We'll talk about the project schedule, and then we'll answer some questions. And then at that point, Jeff is going to go through the content of the survey, how we got to this point with the survey, and see what questions you have, and if there's any changes we need to make. We're hoping tonight that maybe we can get approval on the survey so that we can move forward with that important process. Next slide, Ethan. So project goals and introductions, next. So as Ron introduced me, my name is Elsa Fisher. I've been consulting with Barry Dunn for about four and a half years. Barry Dunn started out 50 years ago as a tax consulting firm, and about 30 years ago, they started doing government consulting. Five years ago, they started a Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Practice Area, which Nikki and I work for. All we do is Parks, Recreation, and Libraries planning, and all 20 of us, there's 20 of us across the country, we all are former practitioners. So I worked at four Illinois Park Districts before I started consulting over the course of 33 years. So we've all been in Ron's shoes at one point or another. So I'm going to let everybody introduce themselves, just so that you can get some context of who's on the team.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Nikki Ginger, and I am the engagement manager on this project. I'm also your neighbor. I just lived up the road there in Lagrange, so I'm very local, and it's an honor to be working with you all. I have been with Barry Dunn almost exactly two years. I came to Barry Dunn after working for the Chicago Park District for nearly 13 years. So like Elsa said, a lot of history with Parks and Recreation. I'm going to pass it over to Jeff.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Andrason. I'm president of Acuity Research and Insights. We're a full-service market research and opinion polling firm. Our office is in Evanston. We've done work for parks agencies, forest preserve districts, school districts, mostly in the Chicago metro area for over 30 years. Acuity has been around for about 10 years now. Most recently, we've done work for the Park District of Oak Park. We're currently doing a study for Elmhurst. We recently did work for the Village of Willowbrook Parks and Rec Department, among many others, and we also do annual research for the Illinois Association of Park Districts. We're going to talk about our approach a little bit later, but we're very happy to be part of this team.
Good evening. Steve Connors, a senior principal with Hitchcock Design Group, and our role on the team is for the Parks and Open Space, which Elsa mentioned. Our team consists of about 18 people in our Naperville office that, just like Barry Dunn, is strictly Parks and Recreation professionals. So that's all we focus on, doing park design and planning and grants. And so we not only bring a planning perspective, but because we do design work as well, we understand the implementation side for Parks and Open Space, so we can bring that expertise along with the team.
And some of the other individuals that aren't here today is Barbara Heller. She's going to be working with the village on staffing assessment and visioning. Frank Prese, Elsa just mentioned, he's worked with you before. He's working on the architectural component. We also have a full bench full of individuals that are going to be helping out with this entire project to make sure that we're getting as much support for the Village of Riverside as possible. Next slide. So our goal in this is really to create a plan that's about you. So yes, we are all Park and Recreation professionals. We do do a lot of work around the United States, but this is about you. This isn't about us. This is about creating a plan that is very much the Village of Riverside. So understanding who you are, where you're at, what you've done before, and what we can do for you in the future. Next slide. This, next slide. And so there were five phases to this project that we focused on. The first is the project planning, really having lots of conversations. We meet with Ron every two weeks, along with Village Manager Francis, as well as some individuals from the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. We talk to them and just kind of figure what exactly needs to happen, and how do we adapt the way, the process that we're following. We've already conducted a demographics analysis to really understand who makes up the community. Now, we're in the second phase, which is the engagement. This is the exciting part. This is where we start talking to the community. We start having focus groups. We have pop-up events and different focus groups, like I mentioned. We also have an online engagement tool that's going to be distributed very soon, where the community can go on whenever they would like to, to provide feedback. There'll be a map, an interactive board, a way to communicate and get updates on everything that we're doing. And this is also the part, and Jeff is going to talk about this in a little bit, where we start looking at the statistically valid survey. There's three other phases beyond this, which is after we get all the information, and we talk to the community, and we talk to you, and we understand your needs more thoroughly, then we go into the assessment. So that's where Steve and Frank and the Barry Dunn team, we start looking at all this data and saying, okay, now what? What do we do with this? We also are going to do a recreation program analysis. Elsa's going to talk about that in a little bit, where we're looking at your programming. We're seeing where you're saying that you've got all of these, you've got all these people waiting to get into these programs. What can we do about that, and how can we best support you? Looking at staffing levels, and then when it all comes, when it's all done, we have this nice plan. And really important to us is that we don't just have a plan that, you know, you hear the term sit on the shelf. That's the worst thing possible for us. We want you to have something that you're going to look at and actually want to utilize. It's going to help Ron and his team. Okay. And next slide. And Jeff.
So Nikki was describing a lot of the community engagement, the focus groups, the pop-up events, the online opportunities. That's going to provide a lot of really rich, deep qualitative information, and it's going to be from the people who are probably a little more engaged with the parks and the recreational programs. The community-wide survey is going to be more quantitative, and it's going to need to be more representative of the entire community, not just the users and the people who go to your events and your programs, but the non-users or the very passive users who might use a park once or twice a month, but that might be their only really connection with the Parks and Rec Department. So we want to make sure that we've got, again, a good representation of the entire community. In addition, and this is something that's very interesting and very unique to this project, we were asked to also include feedback in the quantitative survey from non-residents who are enrolled in your programs or attending your events, to understand why they're coming here and what's drawing them to Riverside for those activities, and how satisfied are they, and are there other opportunities that they would be interested in seeing being offered here? So we're going to include both of those groups in our sample. The questionnaire design, which I'll go into a little bit later, has come from a number of different discussions and meetings, initially with meetings with the staff to talk about the priorities, the goals, some of the issues that they want to make sure that we cover in the survey. We've had a meeting and Q and A with the Parks and Rec Board to get their feedback, along with a number of conference calls. I think the draft that you have in front of you is probably the third or fourth draft after all of those discussions. So a lot of thought and feedback have gone into the development of that draft. Again, for this survey, we're looking for a minimum of 300 respondents, and given the size of Riverside proper, that means we're going to send invitations to every household in the community to make sure that we have enough of a response. So every household will have the opportunity to participate in this survey, and they'll also be able to participate a number of ways. They can participate by mail, they can participate online, or they can participate by phone. We have a phone center in our office in Evanston that they can call. Now, every household will have an ID with their survey, so once somebody completes that survey, using that ID, that ID cannot be used again. So we avoid people who say, well, I want the Parks and Rec Department to know, I really want this, so I'm going to fill this out 15 times. They won't be able to do that. We'll take care of all the distribution, but there will be some coordination with the department in terms of reaching out to the non-residents who, again, are on their registration rolls, so that we can contact and invite them to participate as well. Given the fairly large Hispanic-Latino population, both in Riverside and in the surrounding communities, the survey will be available in both English and Spanish. So whichever language someone is more comfortable with, even if they might be bilingual, they'll have that opportunity to respond accordingly. We do include some key metrics in this, their overall opinion of the Parks and Rec Department, the value that they think it represents, given its share of their property tax dollars, their satisfaction levels with parks and facilities. So we've got statewide and regional metrics that we can benchmark against, but most of the questionnaire is really more customized to the Parks and Rec Department of Riverside. Next slide. Once we've completed data collection, we have our sample, we'll be very careful to make sure that, again, our sample of Riverside residents is representative of the whole community. So we'll know where they live from where we mailed the invitation, we'll know their age, their gender, whether they have children under 18, their race and ethnicity, whether they're a homeowner or a renter, and we'll compare that with census data. And if we need to... And if we need to, we'll wait our respondent sample to those census targets, so that when we're analyzing the results, we know that we're not skewed toward one demographic group or another more than it should be. It should be representative of the whole population. We'll do a thorough analysis of every question, pointing out significant and statistically meaningful differences by those groups or regions, so we know which priorities are especially prescient among certain groups versus others. In our final report, we'll include that detailed analysis along with an executive summary. And then finally, we'll work very closely with the Barry Dunn team after the survey's done and compiled and presented to help interpret our results and make sure that those findings are fully incorporated into the full plan.
So, following the engagement of the community, where we kind of collect the community's input, that's where we kind of then move into the assessment phase. As Elsa mentioned, there's sort of three steps to that. There's the parks, there's the facilities and their programs. So, specifically, our Hitchcock Design Group will look at your park and open space assessment with sort of, starting with some boots on the ground, visit all of your various open space and parks, do detailed inventories, and be talking with staff. Because obviously, what we're seeing is we're seeing your parks and open space in a snapshot of time. So, we want to understand not just what we're seeing visually out at the site, but what your staff has experienced over time, and some of the challenges and issues that were the sites. In addition to inventory and understand the conditions, we're going to look at all the various amenities that you have and catalog those and classify your parks by sort of national standards, many community and neighborhood parks, and look at the amount of acreage that you have per population, the amount of amenities you have per population, their age and their condition. So, we're not just doing a full detailed inventory analysis, but then we take it to a benchmarking level. And we understand you have the right amount of acreage, the right amount of type of parks, and are they distributed right with the right type of amenities for your community? The benchmarking is just a foundation to start with discussion. As Elsa and Nikki both mentioned, this needs to be unique to Riverside. So, we want to, those benchmarks create an opportunity versus a conversation about what are the real needs that you have for your community, and do you need more, more or less of something, and are there certain things and conditions that we need to address? In addition to that, we're going to take a little bit of a unique look and dive a little bit deeper into the fact that you've got some natural areas and open space. And so, not just looking at standard parks, but understand the environmental side of it, and what we need to do with, you know, the sustainability and some of the policies that you have in place for like pollinator gardens and trying to reduce invasive species and promote native species. So, make sure that's all worked into the park, park assessment as well. And as we look at that assessment and combine it with the community needs that we're hearing, we'll develop a set of recommendations and work forward, not just with the full team, but with your staff and eventually this leadership group about what those recommend, what the right recommendations are for your community. Next slide, please. And in tandem with that, Williams Architects will be doing the facility assessment. So, as we're looking at parks and open space, we'll be looking at your indoor facilities. And we understand that's fairly limited, but still be able to understand how that works with the program needs that you have, you know, in, in sort of mentioning the, the summer camps, you know, and the needs that you have there, and what, and whether or not we have the right parks and open space in the community, the right type of indoor spaces to serve those growing needs. So, kind of, as we're looking at the parks and open space, Williams will be evaluating your indoor facilities, understanding the, not just the condition of those, but again, the program space available and the needs in the community that are looking for additional programming, and what kind of expansion of space or renovation of space you might need with that as well.
So, the third piece of the analysis is the recreation programs assessment. So, we'll start with Ron and his team and kind of do a staff swat, what's working, what's not working, what are some of the challenges. You can keep going, sorry, Ethan. So, we'll look at your program menu. What are you offering? We'll look at the program lifecycle. That's an activity we do with staff. The graphic is in the bottom right. Which programs are in the introduction, what's in the growth, the mature and the decline stage? And, you know, do we need to have more of some things and less of something else? It's a very collaborative process with the staff. We don't know your programs like the staff does. And then we'll do some compare, comparing the menu that you're offering to the demographics that you're serving. So, we try to look for program gaps, and we'll also look at the information that Jeff gathers from the survey and the information that we gather on the social pinpoint site and through the public engagement to see if there's any common themes of what people are asking for that maybe you haven't had the opportunity to offer yet, maybe because you don't have facility space, but then are there partners in the community that you could work with to offer? So, we'll also be looking at some of the other parts of the rec assessment. We'll be looking at some similar providers and some partnership opportunities. We're also going to be looking at program fees. That was a part of your proposal. So, we'll come up with a list with staff of which agencies you want to be compared to and look at the series of programs that you want to study to see how your, your fees compare. And then we'll be looking at some staffing levels and making some recommendations. Next slide. So, the project schedule. As Nikki pointed out, we've finished the, the project planning, and we're starting phase two, which is the, the engagement. That will go pretty much through the summer, where we're going to be at events and, and reaching out to people and meeting people where they are to learn what they want from Parks and Rec. And then the, the park and facility assessments will start in August and take about three months. The rec assessment will start in September and take three or four months, and then we'll start writing that final report. And we'll be back in front of you several times throughout the process to keep you connected. I believe our next touch, touch point will be Jeff coming back and giving you a review of what he learned from the statistically valid survey. Next slide. So, after tonight, and we get approval with the survey, hopefully, we'll get that mailed. We're going to finalize the online engagement tool. We're meeting with staff next week to go through all the possibilities that you can, all the tools that you can use on the social pinpoint site to gain public information. And then we're going to compile a full engagement strategy. So, we have this social pinpoint site where people can go online, but then what are all the ways that we're going to be meeting people where they are over the next several months? So, the staff will have a document that they can share with you that will guide the engagement all the way through. So, then after the strategy is complete, we'll begin the engagement. So, we've already started to talk to Ron and staff about potential focus group attendees, potential stakeholders that we need to meet with, and then combining our efforts with some of your existing events so that we can have a table and some activities to start to gather, gather public input during the summer months. So, with that, I'd like to answer any questions that you have about the process, this presentation, and then Jeff's going to talk specifics about the survey.
Questions or comments from the trustees at this time?
Just a question about the facility assessment and the staffing recommendations. How do you factor in, in your process and your recommendations to make sure that they're suited for a village of our size with our peculiarities and wonderful features, including resource limitations?
Absolutely, yeah.
Guaranteeing that we're not delivering, receiving a work product that's
Yes.
unlimited resources.
Yes. So, the plan must be implementable, and implementable not just financially, but we're not going to recommend a 65,000-square-foot rec facility. You don't have any place to put it. So, it's working with staff. I shouldn't say that. I don't, I don't know that. I think that based on prior conversations, but it will be a collaboration with staff of what you, what you can afford, what people are asking for, and what's reasonable. Every community's needs are very, very different, and, I mean, that's, you know, part of the demographic report and Steve's work. I mean, it's really understanding what's here, you know, who lives here, what resources do you have, and what are people looking for? And people may be looking for some things that you just can't provide, but you don't have to be everything to everybody, right? There's other opportunities. There's other service providers. I mean, we want a plan. We want to work with staff to create a plan that you can implement. It's really important to us that it's implemented.
Any other questions from the board? Did you have some more for us?
Yes. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, and we're going to talk survey.
I'm interested in your opinions. I think each of you has a copy of the, the survey. This is the one that, again, that we've worked with, with the staff, with the Parks and Rec Board, with the Barry Dunn team. I'm going to describe it in a very high level, but if there are specific questions that you have or items that you, you would like me to clarify or answer, or suggestions, I'm, I'm happy to address those as well. The first page starts out very broadly. We like to start our surveys out broadly, get overall opinions about the Parks and Rec Department, and we also like to include open-ended questions. And we include two very early in the survey. We want to know before they start seeing what we're asking them about in terms of possible amenities or possible programs. We want them to first tell us what's on their mind. What do they like most about the Parks and Rec Department? And what improvements would they like to see, or how could the department better serve them or their household? So, we'll take those verbatim responses. If they give us five things that they like, we will code. We will assign a numeric code to each of those five things, so that we can quantify how many times each of those came up across all 300-plus respondents to see which, which items are, are most important or most frequently mentioned by the community. Same with the improvements they like to see or the, any dislikes that they have. I mentioned before that this will be a survey mostly of Riverside residents, but it'll also include some of the non-residents who are using your parks and facilities. For the residents only, we'll ask them early on their best estimate as to what percent of their property taxes they think goes to the Parks and Rec Department, their best estimate. And I'll explain why we ask that in a later question in the survey. We then move into their general usage of parks and facilities in the community, which ones they and their household have been to in the past 12 months. We give them a map, so that if they know, well, I know it's the one at the, at this intersection, but I don't know the name of it, they'll be able to pick it out on a map, so that, so that we know specifically which ones they go to. And for anybody who's been to any of those locations in the past year, we ask a series of satisfaction questions on the overall condition of those locations, the safety, the amenities provided, the quality of playground equipment, if, if that's available at the parks, accessibility, and those sorts of things. If anybody gives a less-than-glowing score, we ask them why they aren't more satisfied, and specifically with which location and why. So, if they're unhappy with the trails, we know which trails and why they're unhappy. They're muddy, they're crowded, they're overgrown, whatever it might be. And I mentioned earlier that we want to make sure we've got a representation of non-park users. If somebody says, I haven't been to any of these locations in the past year, we want to know why not. Are you going somewhere else? Have you had a bad experience? And if you're going somewhere else, where, where are you going and why? What are those parks, or what are those amenities offered that you can't find here in Riverside? So, we, we really try and understand what the barriers are for the non-users from using and taking advantage of your, of your assets. We then go into some needs assessment questions and ask about a number of amenities to see which ones residents are interested or would like to see. And if they're interested in those, how well those needs are being met, whether they're offered by the Parks and Rec Department or anybody else. So, if somebody says, I'm interested in pickleball courts, they might be going to a nearby community that's addressing all of their pickleball court needs currently. And they might say, my needs are being met, so I don't really need the Riverside Parks and Rec Department to duplicate what I have half a mile away, or wherever it might be. Same with baseball or softball fields or a splash pad. But if some of those things are lacking in the area, and some, and a lot of people are saying, yeah, I'd like to have a splash pad, but I have nothing available to me nearby, that will represent a big gap in the, in the, in the area, and it might be an opportunity that the Parks and Rec Department might want to consider. And then when we're done testing each of those, we'll ask them if the Parks and Rec Department could do one of these things. Which one would be most important to you? So, we try to avoid people saying, yes, I want 10 things. Well, 10 things aren't feasible. If you could have one thing, which would be most important? And from those 10 things, there will probably be three or four that, that represent the highest priorities that would represent the more immediate opportunities, and the things lower on the list might be some years away that you might consider. We would do a similar thing for programs and events. We ask which programs and events they attend, and their satisfaction with those on a number of attributes. And then similar with your parks and facilities, if they don't participate in your programs and events, we ask them why not? Where else do you go, and why do you go there? What kinds of events are you attracted to elsewhere that, that you're not seeing in Riverside? And then we test their level of need or demand for age-specific types of programs. So, early childhood programs, youth programs for ages five to 11, for ages 12 to 17, adult programs, active adult programs for those 65 and older. And again, we ask how readily available are those activities currently, again, either by the Parks and Rec Department or any other provider? And we'll use that to identify, again, any gaps that there might be, and then what the priority should be that they would like to see. We have a few questions, asking whether or not residents feel that the, the department should focus on replacing playground equipment with new similar-sized structures or expanding one or two playgrounds with something larger than what's currently there. Similarly, we're asking questions about whether the department should look at more active recreational features such as courts, basketball courts, tennis, pickleball courts, sports fields. If they should focus more on passive recreational features like benches, landscaping, restrooms, those sorts of things. Or should they maintain the parks as they currently exist without any enhancements or any, just trying to keep them in as natural a state as possible? So, we're trying to get a sense of how much that residents would like to see in the parks. And then earlier, I mentioned the question about their estimate as to what percent of their property taxes goes to the Parks and Rec Department if they live in Riverside. After we've gone through all those questions I just described, we tell them that it's actually less than 1%. So, knowing that less than 1% of your property taxes is going to the department, and thinking about the parks and facilities and programs and events, how would you rate the value that that less-than-1% represents on a zero-through-10 scale? That's one of those benchmarking questions that we can use to see how residents feel this department represents in value compared to other agencies. We wrap the survey up with some questions about their sources of information when they're looking for information about parks and rec programs, activities, facilities, whatever it might be. Where do they go? And if they give multiple sources, which is their preferred source? It might be one that they're not currently using. They may not be aware of your social media presence, but they, that, that might be their preference. So, we'll be able to identify the best way to reach them, not only the users, but more importantly, if there's an opportunity, a better opportunity to reach out to the non-users based on their preferences. And then similarly, for the non, for the non-Riverside residents who come here, just like we asked Riverside residents, why do you go somewhere else if you're not using our parks or programs? We're asking the non-Riverside residents, well, why are you coming here? What's unique about our programs and, and events that you're not finding in your community? And what more could we be doing to attract you here? And then we really wrap it up with just some final demographic questions. Again, their age, their household composition, if they have children under 18, their race, ethnicity, how long they've lived in Riverside or in the community, where they are, if they own or rent their home. And as I mentioned earlier, that's what we use to, if we have to wait our sample to match to census data, so that we know our results are demographically and regionally representative. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions or discussion by the trustees?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. I, maybe I missed this in the overview of the process, but I understand that Williams Architects is going to be handling the facilities piece of this. And is this survey intended to provide a lot of helpful information for that component of things? Or is there going to be a separate survey dedicated to facilities and indoor recreation needs?
Well, this is going to cover some of the facilities that, that we, we tested here. So, some of it might, might be, you know, some, some more structural. Some of it is more, again, more kind of passive recreation. So, we've got playground equipment. We've got outdoor basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts, gazebo, fitness stations, ball fields, splash pad, or spray ground.
Right. Those are all outdoor.
Right. They're all outdoor.
Right. I didn't really see a corresponding level of activities and interests like studio space for indoor exercise or, you know, stationary equipment for or, you know, stationary equipment for X, Y, and Z activities. So I didn't know if this would be the opportunity to also explore what the community thinks about indoor needs and recreation.
We can certainly include some of those elements in this list. It didn't really come up in the discussions, but the other thing that we'll get some of that feedback from, again, we've got a lot of open-ended questions. So if people are saying, "Yes, we need more dance studio space, and there's nothing here, there's nothing in the area," they'll have a number of opportunities to express that, but we can certainly test that specifically.
I think it would be good to address it explicitly because if you leave it to people to come up with it in a survey that's oriented exclusively towards outdoor amenities,
Right.
it might not occur to them to raise those questions.
So you mentioned studio space. Was there something else you mentioned that I missed?
Yes, like exercise equipment space. That's whether it be machines or weights or...
Fitness facility.
Right, or things for, you know, computer classes or, you know, typical parks and recreation offerings. We do have a Quincy Street Community Center that has some space available, a lot of flex space available, but for specific uses that residents might be interested in, it might not be the best-suited space for that. So just to gauge the full scope of interest upfront before Williams has to take off and make informed decisions or recommendations for facilities would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Feedbacking on what you just said, coming from the Parks and Rec Board. We use a lot of other spaces. I'm sure you know this, that we use a lot of other spaces. We use a lot of the District 96 gyms and local gyms and stuff like that. So, you know, maybe to your point of talking about what recreation space do we maybe need more of as a village? Indoors, I think, is important, especially now that, you know, we're getting snowstorms all the time. But my other question was, as you mentioned, that it's going to be a code per household for people to respond. And I'm wondering if it would be possible at all because I know that my opinions are more different than my husband's opinions. So, you know, how can that be addressed? And I'm sure there's a way.
So, yeah, I misspoke. It's not a code per household. It's a code per adult in the household.
Perfect.
So if there's an adult child living at home, the adult child could even respond if they wanted. We tend to avoid interviewing minors because you get into a lot of ethical and legal issues with that. So, yes, it'll be specific to adult individuals in a household.
Perfect.
But that's the first time I've heard that two people in a household don't.
Never happened? Never happened before?
Never, not in 30 years.
Anything else from the board? Well, thank you, Barry Dunn and team. We appreciate this. It's a big project for the village. Thanks, Director Malkyody, for leading this. We look forward to the results.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is update on the Grove Line Avenue flood wall project. Manager Francis.
Thank you. Not only will I be presenting some items to the village board, but we also have village engineer Tracy Weiss here to also answer any questions. And she did the amazing memo that is attached to the Agenda History Sheet based on the board's direction in March about trying to get a baseline for board members of an understanding of where we were and where we currently are on the Grove Line flood wall discussion. She provided the background, but then also outlined the different alternatives. In addition to that, also incorporated the cost breakdown and also noting the options provided by Burke Engineering as an additional alternative. So that's technically alternative 2 with modifications. And so as part of that discussion, the board had not only asked about that, but then had also asked staff, myself, to reach out to MWRD about paying, offering to enter into an additional partnership agreement to pay the difference. And so since that time, I have spoken with leadership. Obviously, funding is never approved until it goes before their board and they review it and approve it appropriately. But their leadership team at MWRD said, "This is a project that they are heavily interested in. They would like to see it happen." And so they believe that their board would be agreeable to increasing the amount of funding. However, they also stated that it would... They don't believe that their board would agree to 100% of the increase in costs and that the Village of Riverside would have to be an equal partner in that cost increase. And so they have already... In the Agenda History Sheet is a table that talks about the original construction cost, provides the different revised costs. And because of this being a federal project, it is a 65-35 split. So what does that mean? So the federal government will pay for 65% of it, up to $10 million. So even if it far exceeds that $10 million, the 65%, that's where their cap is. And so in the table, I provided the breakdown and also reflected MWRD's current dollar amount that is obligated, which is the approximately $2.5 million that they've agreed to, that we have that information within our IGA. So if you're looking at the table, I've highlighted the revised costs in 2023, which is the 18.3 million total cost with the cap of it being at 10 million, which then the difference for the local 35% cost match would be the 8.3 million less what has been obligated by MWRD. And so that difference is approximately 5.8 million. And so if we were to do that dollar amount, we would be looking at a cost at this point in time if we followed the direction of their leadership of requesting half of that difference. It would be approximately 2.9 million. We would be paying 2.9. MWRD would be paying 2.9. However, if we go with, based on what Burke has proposed, it would be alternative 2. And Tracy did a great job of outlining... It's not included in the packet, but she came up with a cost estimate of it being approximately 15.4 million for the cost. That doesn't include the sewer separation that is separate because that would not be an eligible expense for this particular project. And so if we were at the 15.4 million for the items that were listed that were eligible for this particular federal project, it would put us right at the $10 million mark, actually, for the federal funding piece. What does that mean? That means the local share would be 5.4 million. MWRD, you know, less the 2.5 that they've obligated, which means we're at a difference of approximately 2.9 million, which means we would be looking at potentially requesting approximately 1.5 million from MWRD and us contributing approximately 1.5 million. However, as noted in my Agenda History Sheet in speaking with leadership at MWRD, I had noted that there is interest in doing the separation. Typically, as I noted in my Agenda History Sheet, MWRD does not pay for sewer separation. However, in speaking with them, of this would be a component to not only decrease the cost of this particular project, but also it is a necessity based on the topography of that area. And if we didn't do it, they could still experience flooding. They believed it was a good candidate, given those other factors. So if we then had that additional project at approximately 1 million, we could submit and make a request when they do a call for projects of a cost share. So we wouldn't get the full $1 million, but we would request whatever they award as part of that cost share. It could be approximately 50%, so a half million, and complete that particular project. And we could complete it prior to the construction of the flood wall, too. We would just have to wait for the call of projects. Once again, we compete against other communities when they're doing their call for projects, too. So bearing that in mind. So those are all of those various pieces as it relates to feedback from MWRD, the project in general. But then I also wanted to highlight that there was a request from a board member for us to get a proposal or to find out what are the costs for doing a new non-structural. First, it was, "Please reach out to Army Corps and ask them if they're going to do another non-structural review." They said no. And so then the follow-up step was requesting that Burke Engineering provide a proposal for that if the board wanted to move forward. That would be at 100% the village's cost. If the village decided to move forward with something that was non-structural, then that would be that the funds that have been appropriate for this particular project, because it's very narrow in scope, would no longer be available to us. And we would have to reimburse MWRD for those costs. So just so the board's aware, approximately it's $300,000 right now that we would have to turn around and give MWRD a check for. And that was part of our agreement when we started this process, was recognizing that if we did not move forward, that we would have to reimburse MWRD. So I think some of the items that staff is requesting guidance on... And if you have technical questions, Tracy is here. She's become very well-versed on the flood wall project, and she's providing amazing support to me because I am not an engineer by trade, though I dabble in it. And so staff is requesting guidance on the following. Is it the goal of the village board to decrease the possibility of flooding or mitigate property damage created by flooding? Is the board interested in contracting with Burke Engineering to complete a non-structural review? Is the board interested in one of the alternatives provided? Or would the board like Army Corps of Engineers to revise their initial design and incorporate the items? So essentially, alternative 2 and incorporate the items that were provided and suggested by Burke? Which I will say that MWRD was actually interested in when their engineers looked at it. And if it's yes to any of these options, once staff has clarity of, okay, this is the alternative we want and get that cost estimate, then I can move forward with making that funding request through MWRD. I would submit it to their executive director, who would then forward it on to their board for discussion.
Thank you, Manager Francis. So I think with the board's permission, I'd like to address this issue of non-structural first because that seems to be a bit of a threshold question. If we're going to do that, then everything else kind of gets put on hold while we do that. And I want to make sure, because I didn't originally understand it, I want to make sure the trustees understand it. When they say "non-structural," it's a term of art. What it means is mitigating the impacts of flooding rather than preventing flooding. And as Manager Francis said, that would be our cost just to study alone, $80,000, correct? So I guess I'd like... I think it would be helpful if we address that first. And then, depending on the answer to that, move on to the question of which alternative or how we want to proceed. So we'd open it up for discussion or questions on the issue of whether or not we want to engage Burke to do a non-structural study at this time.
I'll just say as a preliminary matter is that I am the one who requested that we find out how much it would be because I honestly feel that a complete non-structural review is something that should have been done by the Army Corps at the outset of this project. We should have, as a board, an understanding of exactly how many properties flood and what kind of flooding they're experiencing and what kind of, you know, measure it would take to, you know, alleviate the issues. Because, you know, stopping the water from coming is a very monumental and complicated project. And if you accept that these people are in a floodplain and the water is going to come, then you know what you're dealing with. How many properties need to be elevated? Is it a matter of, you know, installing sump pumps, you know, because the infiltration is minimal? We don't have any solid answers on that. And it's something that should have been assessed at the outset of the project. Now that the project costs have escalated so dramatically, we don't know what the non-structural alternatives will be. Now, it's very expensive, as I'm seeing from this estimate, to get that information at this stage. So I acknowledge that. And it is not my recommendation under the circumstances that we do that now. But it is frustrating to me because I feel that if we did have full information, we may have been able to come up with a combination of approaches for far less than is being set forth in Alternatives 1, 2, and 3. So that's the context for my request, having been made.
Thank you. Any other questions, any response to those comments?
I believe Army Corps did know the extent of flooding. Who was flooding, at what level, and the extent of it. I mean, that was part of their study.
No, it was not. Not entirely. They identified six properties as being, you know, worthy of having non-structural alternatives, and they wouldn't identify which properties those were. And with respect to all the others, are they only claiming that six properties need help within this entire area that experiences flooding? So the analysis was not done properly.
Not sure I agree with that, but our engineers are telling us that they do not favor a non-structural approach, correct?
It would not... You wouldn't eliminate the flooding problem, the over-the-river bank flooding.
To your first question, I think our goal should be to prevent flooding, not just help with the cleanup.
Any other comments? Trustee Evans?
I do recall seeing maps of the water that the water extended, like, past well into the residential area. You remember?
Yes, that's the affected area.
But I think it's more than six houses.
Actually, if you look at their Upper Displanes feasibility report, there are six properties that they reference as, you know, with respect to non-structural alternatives. There's an appendix that is referenced, and those, you know, they don't identify which properties they are. But they say that only six of them at various times meet that eligibility for a non-structural analysis, but they don't provide any details. I asked for the details. They won't give me the details.
I understand. And we probably should do the due diligence of seeing what all the options are. But, you know, just from experience, just my knowledge is that when there is a flood and not even when we reach the top of the wall that's there now, the flooding extends to Lincoln. So we know it's many, many homes that are impacted. I don't really know where you get six, sorry.
Yeah, it's in their appendix. But the point being, though, that clearly there are more homes than six homes. But the point being, though, that clearly there are more homes than six homes in that area. And very likely, we hear from more than six families, you know, that are affected when the waters come in. But we don't know the extent to which, and what the appropriate remedy would be, and how much that remedy would cost. Sometimes, you know, you need a multi-factor to approach to solve a problem. And I think, you know, the inclusion of the proposal for sewer separation is an excellent suggestion and means of approaching a very complex water problem. So, but I was just providing context.
Trustee Evans?
No, I do remember when they gave a presentation. But when it was Jeff who presented, they could not differentiate whether a lot of those things were flooded because of the water banks reaching the properties or because of rain saturation. So that was incomplete. Aberdeen is accurate on that count. We never got clarification on that. Of course, it's also been six years, right?
I'll just say that my concern with the mitigation, what I refer to as the mitigation, rather, and the engineers refer to as non-structural, is there's the private property impact component, but there's also a public safety component to all this. When that area floods, the neighborhood is isolated. People can't get to and from their homes. Emergency vehicles can't get through, can't get through or get into the area easily. So that's my concern about doing just mitigation of flood impacts. And on a very practical level, the concern is, how do you get 150 different people to participate in something like that? Now, that's a lesser concern than the public safety and public health aspect of having a neighborhood flooded. So that's my concern.
If I may, just so that the board is aware, we do have non-physical, non-structural measures that we already implement. As staff, we have evacuation plans and protocols. We do have different risk communication that goes out. So Director Buckley is typically in the area. We're along coordination with Director Tab if we have to close down the bridge. We're notifying residents to relocate their, so there is a protocol and process. So there are certain things when we're talking about non-physical, non-structural measures, as outlined, about what non-structural measures are. We, internally, we've already put those in place, and those have been in place for a very long time. That predates myself.
So, Trustee Koss?
I think, I know I'm going to nip it up in the block here, but I feel like we haven't, we spent, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting. And then from what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, especially with the village engineer and how much time village staff has spent on this issue, I think it's really important that if we're going to move forward in any manner in this, we need a vote saying, yes, we're doing a flood wall, or no, we're not doing a flood wall. I think we need to, I think we need to have a vote on that. And so, given that that's my opinion, I would like to make a motion for a vote. And I can, you know, I...
If I can, let me come back to that, because I want to, I will conclude this non-structural discussion first. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Trustee Marshalska, but you, I believe you said that you're not necessarily recommending this at this time. So unless others have a feel that we really should be doing that, I think we can move on to talking about the flood wall. Is that fair? Is there a consensus for that? Any objections to that?
To discuss it?
No, to move on beyond the non-structural and say, we're not going to do the non-structural. We're not going to engage Burke to re-study or do a study of the mitigation efforts or options. Is that fair at this point? I appreciate very much that, you know, if we were starting from the beginning now, we would want to do that, and I understand that completely. But anyway, so, so then the next question is, we have, we have some options on the flood wall. Our engineers are recommending alternative two. And I just want to be clear, and again, this falls in the category of something that it took me a while to completely understand. All the options have the same exact benefits in terms of preventing river flooding into the neighborhood. Is that fair to say, looking at the engineer?
They have the same impact of the river over top.
Right.
Into the community. It's whether the interior flooding is handled.
So really, the options are all about how, once you build the wall, you're preventing the river from coming in, but you're also preventing stormwater from going out to the river. So you have to do stormwater management. And so the options for the various price points are how much internal stormwater management do you do? Our engineers are saying we should do option two, which includes detention, as I understand it. But then we would have to do the sewer separation on our own, whether we get grant funding for that from MWRD or we just do it like we do all other sewer separation projects. So I guess I want to hear from the board on, you know, are you comfortable with the recommendation from Burke Engineering? And you want to proceed in that manner? Or do you want more information, or would you rather a different alternative?
That's where we're foregoing the pump stations that we were originally going to have.
Alternative two had one pump station.
One pump station, correct.
And did they determine which one they wanted to have? Whether it was going to be over by...
It would be the south pump station.
The south one, right.
Right, and that, and that south pump station, if you looked at alternate one and, or two and three, alternate two has the larger pump station that has additional capacity, so that if we do the sewer separation on the north side of forest, that can be connected into that south pump station, and that could facilitate all the floodwater.
Just to make sure I follow comments by Village Manager Francis. Alternative two is one pump station plus a sewer separation add-on, right? A la carte, if you will. And if I followed the math, all of it is, it's an ask to, there are a series of asks here on the table to various governing bodies, including MWRD, who I understand has been a fantastic partner and a great advisor in this process. And I don't know if they watch our meetings, but we're very grateful for that, as I'm about to ask for money. And so if I'm following the math, we're proposing, considering splitting half, or splitting the overage 50/50, or making a request to split the overage 50/50. And so in that $15.4 million price tag for option two, alternative two, there's a $5.4 million cost overrun. Then there's, help me, Jessica, get to $3 million?
There's 2.5 that they've already obligated.
Correct, okay, so that leaves about three. So half of that, what the, we would potentially be discussing, half of that is one and a half million. That would be something that the village could consider paying for. And then if you add on that a la carte option for a sewer separation, that's a million dollars. A 50% cost share would be another half a million dollars. So for a sum of about $2 million, as an estimate, we could have a potential solution that has been supported by our engineers that includes a sewer separation, that improves long-term property values in this area in a material way. We've heard over the course of my tenure on the board and before that, having watched, looked at the record, we've heard about people having a difficult time renting out their properties or selling their properties. So they feel like they're stuck in the village if they, if they have no other option. We've heard about people's extensive psychological struggles every time it rains and the concerns for that. And so I guess this is a long and tangled journey. I just wanted to make sure I understood the math. Also, not an engineer, it does not seem unreasonable to me to have those potential benefits for a price tag of about $2 million.
I would, I would add to that, that the $1 million for sewer separation is something we've got to do sometime, anyway. So really, the equation is one and a half million for all that, because that $1 million's going to be spent one way or another one day, so.
President Pollock, did you want to take public comment on that?
I will, I will. As soon as...
I just have one more question. About how long is this going to take for completion? Do you have a ballpark on this?
For the whole thing, including the flood wall and the sewer separations? Because I think those are going to be two separate projects. The sewer separation project would probably take, you know, a summer. Maybe, maybe not the whole thing, but, and then I think the flood wall would probably take at least a year or two.
Yes, if I may. So currently, the schedule as provided in the end of 2022, it hasn't been revised recently, but essentially, they had everything being completed by summer of 2028.
28.
Correct.
Okay.
But, sorry, if I may ask a question? It, it could go in phases, could it go in phases?
So you could do the separation?
Do the separation. I guess what I'm getting at is that's within some of our control, right? Less so with other bodies, subject to our friends at MWRD. That's within some of our control, right? So that is some mitigation that we could offer to these residents in the near term that may help.
And just understanding that when it's raining really heavily, even adding that additional capacity with sewer separation, you can still potentially have, you know, depending on what's going on with the river and the capacity just in general, you could still have basement flooding with, depending on all the different factors.
Of course. My point being, I think the kindest thing we could probably say about this project is that it has been nonlinear, right? It has not followed any particular timeline. That makes sense to many of us. It's a complicated project, two steps forward, one step back. In the midst of that, we get painful, emotional appeals from residents and emails and messages. Please help us, right? Please do something for us. And we've been doing sewer separations periodically throughout the village. It seems to me that this option offers, it is not a perfect option. I do not, I do not, please do not misunderstand that. I do not think a sewer separation solves this problem, but it does offer some quicker remediation.
I have some question for clarity. So the $15.1 million is based on the original alternate two. If we're adding in detention, it's not going to be 15.1, it's going to be 16.4?
The $15.1 includes the LURDs, right? So the original construction costs, I think, were...
For alternative two, it was 11.4.
11.4, right. So then you add in, like estimated detention, underground storage we're talking about, it's about $500,000, and then it's another $1 million for the sewer separation.
My point is that this alternate two says no detention.
Right, but that's including, that's the, that's the Burke special. So alternate two is just the, is just what the, is just the south pump station and the wall. You know, Burke thinks that if we add back in the underground storage and also do the sewer separation, you'll get a product like the original design. Because you'll collect all the interior flooding from north of forest and be able to collect that and pump it back into the river.
In the cost estimate that comes up to the $15.4, also talked about making a couple of modifications in the Army Corps design, which some of it would bring down the cost, but then adding in the retention would bring it up, so, thank you.
There's nothing else at this point from the board? I'd like to open it up for public comment. Yes, sir.
Good evening, President Pollock, trustees. My name is David Bartel, and I represent the owner of Eight West Avenue. The April 2023 survey that, done by the Army Corps of Engineers on the flood wall location, falls within 15 feet of the residence at Eight West Number 3. So that means the destruction of the house and adjacent three-car garage. So that's one extra cost that would come on top of your $15.4 million dollars for construction, because now you're also having to take about one-third of the property in terms of easement in order to put the wall there. I'll actually note that the flood wall map that Burke Engineering provided in the materials that you saw today is incorrect in the southern part of the flood wall location. It does not agree with what the April 2023, or I should say, March 2023 map was and is from the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, it's probably immaterial to what Burke Engineering is proposing. I would agree that sewer separation is a definite need from a public health standpoint, when there is flooding, and also if you decide to go ahead with the flood wall. But there is going to be some additional costs, and I'm glad that this board has finally started to see that the, a real cost here and is trying to inform residents. But I think you need to have more information with the residents on that flooding. I also, it is my opinion that building the flood wall is likely to cause, in major flood events, is likely to cause more flooding on the west side of the Displanes River, which is not addressed by the Army Corps of Engineers. That is because FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers, when they look at flood, they consider only height. They don't consider the volume of water coming down the river. If you want a simple illustration of this point, tomorrow, go home, take your hose out, put it down the driveway, have some water come out, see how wide it goes, put a board across about halfway in and see that the water now goes more to the other side. Simple illustration of what will happen when the same volume of water comes down and you have a flood wall, it has to go somewhere. So that's, that's kind of my point here, is there are some additional costs, there's some additional effects, which are not, are not addressed and are difficult to address, given the, what's going on. And the Army Corps of Engineers, unfortunately, their purview is building flood walls and levees and that sort of thing. They're not going to necessarily address the non-structural components, which might help mitigate, as we've, you've discussed earlier, mitigate flood effects, but they're not going to prevent flooding. Thank you.
Thank you. Other residents? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll come back to the board. So any other further discussion or questions before I ask? For, I think Trustee Koss was prepared to make a motion. But before we do that, anything else? Trustee Koss, would you like to proceed? Yeah, so, yes, it's, it's, there's no decisions being made here, but it's my request, recommendation that we have a motion and a vote, so there's an affirmative action for the public to know what we're doing.
A motion to direct staff to this, okay, that should be fine. We're not appropriating money.
Thanks for that clarification, yes.
Can I ask you a question before a motion? If the board were to vote to proceed with, you know, Burke's recommendation, alternative number two with the sewer separation, could we please address at which stage the Section 106 review would occur?
Sure, so as Army Corps had bought up during their last meeting, they were trying not to spend any money. And the Section 106 costs money to do that review and staff allocation. And so they were trying to not spend any more until they got some affirmative direction that Riverside wanted to proceed and what option it was. And, and then they, I mean, they said they had people mobilized. Obviously, the village of Riverside can't conduct or process the 106.
Understood.
But, yes.
You know, it will happen once we give direction that we would like it to happen?
Yes.
And, and the design would be?
So as I've mentioned to the, because I've had this, this has come up multiple times before, is that we've provided a design, right? And so there's been feedback that dates back many years of, this is what we'd like to see. I believe it was in 2019, maybe early 2020, that we came up with a design. And so while this is something we would like to see, Army Corps has their requirement that they are going to be submitting what is the most... Army Corps has their requirement that they are going to be submitting what is the most financially viable. So then it goes through the process of the State Historic Preservation Office, in which they will review it. They confer with the local preservation commission, which would contact Chair Charlie Piple and coordinate with staff, who would be Anne Siren, um, with regard to that review. They would give the feedback, which they've already given feedback, but they would have further discussion based on shippo's review. And then ultimately, whatever that design would be, would then be bought back to the village board with the understanding that, um, you know, as part of the section one oh six, they, they will look at it for how to mitigate impact as it relates to the, the designation of Riverside as a national historic landmark. And so it won't, it won't stop the process. They will give recommendations of impact, but also understanding that Army Corps has to submit the, the most cost-effective item, which includes currently at the state form liners, um, which I know the board, um, was not very enthusiastic of. Um, and so that's when those different conversations ensue.
Okay, just to be clear though, the people that are going to get notice of the section one oh six process is everybody that got notice with respect to Riverside from the original Upper Displanes Watershed Study?
I will confirm that.
Thank you.
If there is someone additionally that you want to be notified or you want to make sure is flagged, because there is concern that maybe they won't get a notification, please let me know. And Tracy and I will coordinate appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Just, so everyone understands, section one oh six is the review processed by the State Historic Preservation Office because we are a landmark village and that preservation review is required in order to assess if there's any impact on our landmark status.
It's not just the State Historic Preservation Office. It's all elected officials up and down the chain that have anything to do with touching Riverside, including the National Park Service, the county, you know, local officials, elected officials at the state and federal level, et cetera. Ever, and interested parties. It's a process.
May I just ask a question of, is, um, it sounds like there's a review conducted to consider and mitigate potential impacts. Are those recommendations binding?
So typically, Army Corps would work in coordination with shippo. So, yeah, so let's say there is a conversation of, well, we don't even want a flood wall. Well, that's not really on the table. What's on the table is here's the flood wall, here is the design. Now, what can we do to, to mitigate impact? And so then they're also looking at it from the perspective of, so if Riverside wanted this particular design overlooked to the flood wall and Army Corps is saying, no, this, you know, this is considered a betterment. You have to pay more for this. If State Historic Preservation Office looked at it and said, no, this helps to mitigate the impact, then it would not potentially be considered a betterment. But there would be a back and forth dialogue.
Who wins? I mean.
I, I, I don't have the answer.
And I'd come to consensus. Sorry, I don't mean to presume that there will be conflict.
And I don't.
There's always conflict, right? And so I, I'm just trying to understand the process in terms of, if, as you said, Army Corps is going to look at cost, right? And we, um, we are looking at haste and timing here. And, and perhaps we could take this offline or address it another time. But I'm, I'm curious how much leverage or authority the one oh six review process has relative to recommendations by the Army Corps.
So in my limited experience, so full disclosure, it is my understanding that they, they, they work closely to mitigate. And so they're going to, and preservation is always, even with local landmark designated homes, they're always looking at it from a cost component as well. Of, we'd really like this, but here's a great alternative if you can't necessarily afford this. And so it's, it's my assumption that there would be that same dialogue to figure out how to, to mitigate impact on the, the village to, so that we don't lose our designation.
Got it, and last question. It's, it seems like we're orienting around trying to decide whether to take some action tonight. If we, if we take that affirmative step, if I understand correctly, that's enough for the Army Corps to kick off the one oh six process? I guess a question, recommendation, hope here is that this can be contemporaneously done, especially if the intent is to be collaborative because it sounds like there are many, many bodies who are going to want to weigh in and discuss this.
Well, it's not just going to be that piece either because then if we're moving forward with a particular option and they're updating the engineering to reflect so, then the village will then have to take the lead on reviewing, contracting with consultant, um, an appraiser to review the properties, look at the potential impacts of those that are on West that, that could potentially have a flood wall, the, the easement that was bought up and then potential impact to the different property owners and loss of remainder of the property.
Thank you.
Trustee Koss?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to confirm the board's support for construction of the flood wall and to, to direct staff to request pricing from the Army Corps of Engineers for alternative number two, but incorporating the recommendations by the village engineer.
That work?
That's just fine.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Trustee Koss, second by Trustee Mateo. Uh, any further discussion on the motion?
Clarity.
Clarity, I'm sorry.
Can you read the first part again?
Trustee Clarity.
Yes.
Please.
Maybe, hold on, okay. Uh, I made a motion to confirm the board's support for construction of the flood wall and to direct staff to request pricing from the Army Corps of Engineers for alternative number two, but incorporating the recommendations by the village engineer.
Okay, so it allows us to move forward, not making any final decisions.
I mean.
Correct.
Confirm our support. Seems like a bit of a jump.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, full disclosure, I worked with Trustee Koss on the wording of that motion. Because, uh, what we were trying to achieve is to get the shippo review started hopefully and, and to address the residents who've been hanging on the edge for years. We thought it was important to include that some statement, some confirm, affirmative statement, because it's come up before that, hell, the board's never committed to doing anything. And so, uh, that was my suggestion, uh, for the motion, but, um.
My question is, at what point do we officially ask MWRD for funding?
I would say once I get a revised, now, I have a prelim number, obviously. So I, I would start drafting something and working with their staff to submit something. But I would ask Army Corps to fast-track and updated estimates so that we could submit something because they're going to need documents to show, reflect the cost change to their board and what that is inclusive of.
Okay.
Trustee Evans?
Would it not be understood that there would be some level of commitment just by moving forward with these actions? Do we have to?
Yes.
I mean, we really haven't notified the public of making any sort of, it's more of a straightforward decision more than we've said anything. We've never said anything like that would sort of indicate that much of a commitment in the past. And it's certainly not listed in the materials.
That is a concern that we have not really officially advised the public that there will be a vote to this effect on these alternatives tonight. It did say it was up for discussion.
Just to be clear, that, that motion did not select one of these alternatives. It was to direct staff to get more information about one of the alternatives and a statement of generalized support for a flood wall. Am I understanding it correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
If I, if I could comment, clearly I seconded the motion, so I'm in support. I think it, um, it strikes a nice balance of demonstrating a commitment in, in a, in an issue that is dragged on from many different trustee changeovers without committing us to a particular direction. So I do, and to Trustee Mateo's point, there's still opportunity here to get it more information. And maybe we learn more about costs or, or, or understand that this is not the right direction to go to. But I, it, I'm obviously in support of taking an affirmative direction forward here. Otherwise, we just continue to have meetings and continue to spend staff time and continue to talk about sort of the same issues.
And to your point, Trustee Clarity, that was my concern when, you know, reading through the packet and having discussions, um, seeing this on the agenda. My concern is that we have, you know, we have spent a lot of staff time on this without an actual su, support of any kind, saying, yeah, we, we think we want to head in this direction of a flood wall. And I'm concerned about the amount of staff time, the amount of hours that have been spent without any sort of, any, any real sort of vote on our part saying, yes, this is something we want to pursue. So that was why, that was my reasoning for bringing this up and, um, having the discussion with Doug is, or, sorry, President Pollak. Because I, I think, I, I think we need to have something, I think we need to have something on the books that says that we do want to pursue this in some form or fashion. And that before we commit more staff time and, um, and really everybody's time on this, that we should understand that do, are, are we really talking about flood wall here? Or are we talking about we're not going to have a flood wall here?
Trustee Evans?
Um, we did make a commitment, a financial commitment to the project. I think that was, that feels like enough of a commitment. With, I mean, the biggest concern is that this is sort of, the language is a little bit, um, it's sort of seems, um, I don't know, very specific and maybe kind of final to some. I, I would say, um, we, it wouldn't be a commitment to the flood wall. It would be a commitment to these alternatives that include the flood wall.
I have a question, and counsel, so you heard the, the motion that was made? If during our research of alternative number two, we decide, you know what? We found something, we don't like it, we want out.
You can do that.
Okay, and that's perfectly legal, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so then that's the level of commitment that we have, exploring.
Correct. This is a, this is a generalized statement of support plus direction to staff to pursue more information about one of the alternatives. If the information you receive is not to your liking, you can say no.
Okay.
I, I would prefer a generalized statement of support to seek the more information about, you know, alternative number two as opposed to a wholesale support of, statement of support for a flood wall, period.
Clearly, there's not a, there's not support, you know? Some people aren't ready to vote in support of the flood wall. I don't, I don't know if that's clear, we haven't voted.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I mean, that's the language. It says, we vote to support the flood wall and we're going to do this, 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 and this.
Well, and I think, and I think that that's exactly my point is, as, as, is that I would like to, I would like to know, and I think that it's important for the village to know and to understand whether or not we are committed to a flood wall or we're not. We're not committed to supporting a flood wall. That's exactly why I made the motion.
We committed, what is it, a hundred thousand dollars?
We can take that back. I mean, yes, we can take a three hundred thousand dollar hit, but we can still take it back and say we're not going to do a flood wall.
Counsel, that's a, that's accurate.
This does not commit us to building a flood wall.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you're, I mean, obviously, you're, the speculation matter reveals that's what the vote is for. Uh, if there's also, if you would like to, uh, bring this up on the next meeting in two weeks, uh, you could propose, uh, alternative language and table it so it's, you know, marked as an action item if you have some concern about that as well.
Minister Francis?
Thank you. So just so that the board is aware, Army Corps is at a standstill. And so without any, so I need to know what additional detail the board needs. Because I, 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 I feel that staff has provided what has been asked. And so if you're saying you need more information, I need you to dive in deeper of what that more information is because I have nothing to go back to. We can't start the section one oh six because they don't have direction. They can't finalize engineering to submit for the section one oh six. So we are legitimately at a standstill currently. We can't talk about property acquisition. We shouldn't be hiring an appraiser because then that's more money that we're spending that we, we don't know what the path is forward.
I do feel it is important to get to a point where we can have the section one oh six because I think through the one oh six is where we are really going to have a better understanding of the visual impact of this, you know, proposal and what needs to be done to mitigate that from the view shed, looking into our national landmark, looking out of our national landmark from all sides. I, I think without that level of analysis and that input and the recommendations, uh, from the, you know, shippo and other interested parties, we are not going to have an understanding from which to be able to vote yea or nay on the flood wall. And we don't have to vote yea or nay until after the outcome of the one oh six is determined. So I think from that standpoint, if what we're doing today doesn't bind us to proceeding, I think we should proceed.
So procedurally.
There's been a motion and a second, it's time to vote.
Can we start on that side?
Clerk Solis?
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Marchazga?
Aye.
Trustee Galagos?
Aye.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion's approved. Thank you, it's a good discuss, it's a, this is a difficult issue. It's a lot of money. It's very important to this village. Uh, there's a lot of factors. I appreciate the discussion. I respect the discussion we've just had and that we will continue to have on this subject. Okay, where are we?
Feather flags.
commuter lot eight reconstruction.
Feather flags.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Flags, C.
Oh, where are we? There we are.
Item C, the feather flags.
By place. An ordinance amending title four, chapter three of the village code related to feather signs. Planner Siren?
Thank you very much. This item was last before you in December of last year, at which point you asked staff to draft an ordinance that would allow feather signs in the business districts for up to thirty days in a calendar year. That ordinance was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission in January for a public hearing. And the Planning and Zoning Commission made minor changes to the ordinance. Um, but they did recommend that feather signs be allowed for ninety days per calendar year instead of thirty, which was the board's direction. But the ordinance that is in front of you is for thirty calendar days, thirty calendar days per year as directed by the board in December.
Any questions, discussion on, on the ordinance? Someone like to make a motion?
You know, we can make a motion for ninety days, is that right?
Good.
If, if you want to do it for ninety, you'd say, I, I vote to approve the ordinance subject to a change of from thirty to ninety.
I mean, it's similar to what we had to do with the, um, hours of the dispensary, where they came with, with a recommendation and we just changed a couple of the verbiage. Fine, I'll make a motion that we allow for ninety days instead of thirty. Same language that the Planning and Zoning put forward to us.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm still, uh, opposed to a widespread, um, program like this, allowing feather flags with this many potential sites. I think that, first of all, the, um, I think that, first of all, the aesthetics of the situation is not something that our residents are going to be pleased with once they see it in action. I think administratively, it creates a burden on our staff to have to keep track of these different properties and the timings, and I think we're opening a door, because we cannot regulate the content and the appearance or design of these new, less expensive forms of advertising. And I would oppose it, whether it was 90 days, or 60 days, or 30 days, I would have been willing to do a carve-out for the single property of the village-owned train station and the village-owned incubator, given its unlikely commercial presence in our village, and the need for a unique advertising opportunity. But that did not happen, and unless there is other interest in me renewing that motion, I've said my piece.
Any further comments, discussion?
President Pollock?
Yes.
So I appreciate, appreciate the work that you've done and the commission's. Nine months ago, I said that our sign code was very carefully thought out and revised within the last 12 years, I believe, and we don't allow moving signs, and in the nine months since, I haven't seen any compelling reason to start allowing them.
There's nothing else? Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans?
No.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Galagos?
Aye.
Trustee Marchazga?
No.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
No.
President Pollock?
No. Would someone like to make an alternative motion? Is that permissible?
Fine, I'll make the alternative motion to have the 30-day verbiage as presented by Planning and Zoning.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Soul.
Trustee Evans?
No.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Galagos?
Aye.
Trustee Marchazga?
No.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Nope.
Trustee, or President Pollock?
Aye. Just want to clarify, we had discussed this before, the motion is approved, the ordinance is approved with a 30-day limit. We discussed this before, and I had indicated my opinion of it, I don't usually vote, but in this situation, it was necessary, so, thank you. Discussion regarding timeline for the referendum question requesting a permanent tax levy dedicated to capital funding for streets.
Good evening, President Pollock, and the Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to be in front of you speaking tonight. During February's board meeting, the board asked staff to prepare a calendar to continue further discussion regarding the referendum of a permanent tax levy for streets. The calendar has been provided in the agenda packet for your review. Clerk Soul, can you please put up the table?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know that I put that in the slides, I'm sorry.
It's in the agenda.
I don't think I'm able to display it, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on page 230 of the agenda packet.
Thank you. So I prepared this table for everyone to see what the cost of issuing our street bond in 2015 was. This is actual data that we paid over half a million dollars to issue, to issue this. So I bring this to your attention, because this is the major benefit of moving from a debt issuance to issuing this permanent tax levy. It's the cost savings to the village. We spend this every time we do a new debt issuance, which is every 10 years. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. These funds, over half a million dollars, can be reinvested into the village. This is money that we spend to outside agencies and have nothing to do with the streets. So this is a major factor in us pushing for a referendum question requesting the tax levy. Staff requests that the board confirm moving forward with the tax levy, so we could plan accordingly. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Are you just looking for directions?
Correct. We just want to confirm that that is the board's position, that we just want to do a referendum question relative to the permanent tax levy devoted to street improvements, and then we would make sure that we follow the guidance and guidelines as it relates to public notice, creation of the question, et cetera, for board approval.
Is there consensus to move forward, or any?
Yeah, I think so.
Questions or discussion, comments? Very good. Thank you. Thank you, very, good job. Commuter 8 Lot Reconstruction, Manager Francis.
Thank you. Director Tab is not here this evening, so Tracy and I said that we will handle this for him. As it relates to the parking lot commuter 8, we have not gone out to bid yet, because there were some questions that came up through the final design piece that were not incorporated as part of the initial budget that was brought forth to the board for fiscal year 2024. Once again, I reaffirm, this is a cost estimate for us to incorporate this piece into the bid. As soon as we get the feedback, Burke Engineering would put it out to bid, so these, these final costs may be less, it may be more. Bidding right now is, it's always interesting during construction season. So I will go through, I will also, prior to kind of going through the different options, I will note that currently, we have, just so the board is mindful of this, we have 11 individuals on the waitlist for Lot 8. So just being cognizant of that. Currently, we have reserved four spots, we haven't offered them to anyone. As individuals did not renew, we did not offer to the 11, understanding that we were going to have to put in the handicap parking spots in Lot 8, and so we could be losing spots. So, the first option, I will share also that Orion and Tracy came up with a creative solution for not, not necessarily losing four parking spots, actually decreasing it to only losing three spots. Ethan, do you have that map that you can? That's it. So you'll notice that they've placed both of the handicap parking spots the same, and so the marked spot is in between the two handicap, so therefore trying to maximize the parking spots. So actually, that, that was a recent change through some discussions that we had, and so when we talk about losing four, it's actually only losing three parking spots. So, the current option is to modify the peninsulas located in the middle to, to meet some requirement, there has to be some minor modifications. We'd lose the three parking spots. So that's basically staying status quo, making some minor tweaks, and that's at the price tag of approximately $7,300. The next option, so mind you, as you're making these decisions, this lot, the goal is, we're putting in pavers that we're not touching it again for the next 40-plus years. Pavers have a life of 50 years, so I just want the board to have that awareness as well. The next option is to remove the two peninsulas and the staircases in the middle of the lot. Ethan, if you can go back to the picture. So you'll notice that in the picture, on either side of the lot, there are stairs, and then in the middle, there are stairs as well. If we removed the two peninsulas and the two stairs in the middle, that would cost approximately $31,300. If we remove the peninsulas and replace the stairs to incorporate the ADA handrails, that's when the, the final option is the approximately $47,000 option. Once again, these are all cost estimates. And so being cognizant of, Director Tab did tell us that removal of the peninsulas would make snow removal operations a little bit easier, and also, when you're removing the peninsulas, you would also only lose one parking spot versus the three that were noted in Option 1. Tracy, did I cover everything?
I think you covered everything, except for, you know, how does, who, are you not used to this? Obviously, with having additional parking spots, you get additional revenue. I think that was the only part that you missed.
Yes.
Just a question, sorry, there's a comment in a memo about potentially reducing the parking spaces allocated to business parking?
Sure.
She talked about that?
So, so, yes. So we have, unfortunately, due to different staff members on medical leave and out, we haven't had a recent count on the utilization of the business parking. We did do a count this week, only four people were in those 12 parking spots. We are going to resume the counts, actually, next week, because the person that was out is returning back to duty, and so we'll be able to accomplish that, so that can be another consideration by the village board as well.
So, to be clear, you're suggesting, in the future, if we had more data, we can mitigate the potential reduction here, if we determine that the business spots aren't being actively utilized?
Correct.
We're not, we're not saying do that now?
Correct.
And if I understand this correctly, under any option, we're losing two parking spaces?
Under number one, you'd be losing three. Otherwise, in Option 2 or 3, you're losing one.
Okay.
Because of, because of the modification that happened after the packet.
Right, right, yeah. So, so we lose, lose one space, I'm sorry, say it again.
It's okay.
Three spaces on number one.
Three spaces with number one that you'll never get back, because we're not going to, 40-year lifespan for that parking lot, we're not touching it again. For 2 and 3, you would only be losing one space.
One space, okay.
So wait, sorry, go ahead.
Marsha, Trustee Marchazga, sorry.
Sorry. The staircases, do none of them meet the ADA requirements currently?
And they're all broken?
None of them meet the ADA requirements currently? Is that correct?
So, they're, it's the handrail. So as it relates to ADA, so if someone's in a wheelchair, they can't get up the stairs, so they're going to have to go to Riverside Road and go up to get onto the platform. So similarly, when a resident will reach out to us and say that they, they need access to the platform, we highly recommend parking in Lot 1, because it's much easier for them to be able to access the platform from that parking lot. It's more challenging. Currently, we do not have any handicap spots. Per various requirements, we are required, based on the number of parking spots, to have two. But there is no way to, to make it easy for a handicap individual to get up those stairs or get into that space, they have to go over to Riverside Road to then go up to the platform.
So we currently don't have handicap spots. This proposal is to put in handicap spots?
We have to.
But the entrance is still going to be inconvenient for the handicap people?
Correct. And so we would not, if a handicap individual contacted the village about a parking spot, also, we do not, we cannot charge for those commuter spots either, for the handicap. So that's the, the other piece. But we always recommend utilizing Lot 1 because of the ease in which they can get to the platform.
Go ahead. Sorry, I'm not liking this.
Yeah. Okay, so if I'm following, in Option 1, we lose three spots. In Option 2, in Option 3, we lose one. Let's set aside Option 2 just for a second. Option 3, we lose one spot, but we get ADA handrails. Option 1 is $7,000, right? So no matter what, with one of these options, we're going to spend $7,000. I'm doing a lot of math tonight, village trustees.
Good for you.
It's not great for any of us. Okay. So in the, in Option 3, it's $46,000. You take out the seven-ish, because any one of these options is a spend, we get down to $39,000, but we gain two spots. So that's $20,000 a spot, and we're going to have this designed for 50 years. Trying to be judicious with village funds, but parking is difficult here, and is at a premium. I don't know what's going on with business parking today, nor do I know what will be going on with business parking in five, 10, 25 years. It does not seem unreasonable to me to spend $20,000 a spot, to save a spot for the next 50 years. And also, I, look, I just think we should, my personal opinion is, we should do the right thing here, and the right thing looks like making sure we have accessible spots and accessible handrails. Please point out the flaws in my math.
Well, no flaws, but I just want to point out that, under any of these circumstances, wheelchair accessibility is not on the table, it's, it's not possible. But not everyone who has a disabled disability is in a wheelchair, so it's still, you know, just want to be clear, that there's, there's doubt, yeah, sorry.
Is the available slope or pitch of the incline not conducive to doing a ramp instead of a staircase with rails?
So in my conversations with Director Tab, because of, it's similar to Swan Pond, it's very steep over there. And so, similar to the discussion with Swan Pond, where we were talking about creating a handicap spot and making it as ADA compliant as possible, a resident that is handicap would not be able to go down to Swan Pond from Burling, but could along Fairbank. And so similar to this particular situation, I think it's called a switchback?
A switchback.
Okay, yeah. And so I don't, the, the capacity or capability isn't there, but Tracy can?
Yeah, no, I just said, I don't think there's enough room to do a ramp in the center right there, so, there's not enough space.
I will note that Director Zavala created a table for the board to follow as it relates to potential lost revenue, and then also, if we went with the different options, so if we went with Option 1, she noted the, the total of lost revenue over 10 years, and then she also noted the other various options, and how much it would cost the village, or based on current rates in dollars of how long it would take to recoup, based on the different items.
Yes, and then if we're talking about, like, the paver's last 50 years, the lost revenue for 10 years is only $19,800. If it's 50 years, it's $99,000 of lost revenue that we're never going to see, until we redo the parking lot and make more spaces. And so the revenue that you are gaining by keeping the other two spaces is a lot more, that's only a 10-year revenue, so trustee Clarity did point on that. And then the increase, we increase the prices of the lots between commuter and business every other year, so that doesn't take into effect 50 years of inflation and price increase either. Does anybody have any questions?
So you're, in your math, we spend more money, but we make more money?
Yeah. So we're going to spend money, so you can see in Option 3 that you favor, it's 35 years to recoup your money. Once we get the money back, the $46,000, everything after that is just pure revenue.
I have another question, not about the revenue. The reason that we're putting in the handicap spaces, are we no longer able to aggregate the amount of spaces between multiple village lots or multiple metro lots? Because you said you were directing people that were handicapped to Lot 1 before, because it was more convenient and the access was there. Can we aggregate those spaces all to the first lot?
Can we aggregate those spaces all to the first lot and just say that's where, you know, no?
I tried. Tracy, can you come on? And I am told, at certain levels, there are different requirements of how many handicap spots are required, and if you could speak to that a little bit more.
I don't have the, the information on the top of my head, but usually, any public lot, there's, you know, for so many spaces, you need so many handicap spots. And, and for this particular lot size, you need two handicap spots. So, it's more just a public lot needs to have these, and it's just a requirement.
If I could just comment on that, as a, as a train commuter, and wanting to be inclusive of all of our residents, Lot One is quite far from where the train parks, right? Or at least the front of the train, if you're trying to get to work a little bit faster. And so, the train parks considerably far east, and so, there is quite a bit of distance there from Lot One.
I have a question. For option two, the stairs to remain, are they not gonna be refurbished in any way? Are they not gonna have ADA handrails?
No, option two, the stairs, they lose the stairs, they're not going to be rebuilt.
The middle ones, correct, but not the ones on either side? At the beginning and at the end?
Is it both?
Yeah. Correct, nothing would, would be done besides the items that are outlined. So, it wouldn't be a complete, comprehensive redo of the signs. It would just be making the modifications. I'm sorry, hold on. Am I confusing you? So, number two would be removing the peninsulas completely and removing the stairs.
But the stairs that remain will not be refurbished? They will not get ADA handrails?
Correct.
They're not required?
My understanding is that, based on what is being touched, it's not required. I can further affirm that with Director Tab.
What's the direction of the board?
In my opinion, I think option three is, would be my preference.
I think it's been made clear, but I agree, I just, it's expensive. 35 years is a long time, but I don't view this as necessarily a revenue issue, but long-term planning for the betterment of our village.
Well, and 35 years is based on current, you know, what we're currently charging for spots. I mean, that, that could come down.
I have another question. Manager Francis, are you aware of any potential for the train platform on that side adjacent to Lot Eight being redeveloped at any time or improved at any time by or in collaboration with Metro?
The platform or the parking lot?
The platform, because I, my question goes to the redoing of stairs to a certain level, but if that level might be subject to change within the near foreseeable future, what that might mean?
So, my understa, so, the board, and I'm not sure of the, the year, but the board has had the discussion of the interest of the train stopping at the train station and then extending the platform, and we've conveyed that to them. And they've said that they, it's under review and that they'll put it within their capital plan, but there's nothing in the immediate future that I am aware of, of them doing that. Because if you recall, I think it was approximately three to five years ago, they had asked about putting a very small warming station on the platform. And the, the board, in addition to, I think, Preservation Commission conveyed, you know, just have the train stop at the train station, doesn't that make sense? And extending the existing platform, and so, that was the direction that they were given back from the village.
If the train station, or the train platform were to be improved and have it be more amenable to, you know, further seating and, you know, perhaps gathering areas for community functions, you know, in the future at some time, would you think that it would, should remain at roughly the same height that it is now, the, the intersection of the stairs with the platform? Or would you foresee it changing?
I, so, if, if Metro decide, if Metro in coordination with BNSF decide to extend the platform, then, which is, they, they'd have to budget for it, I, I would probably foresee not them doing any additional enhancements on this particular platform. They would probably shorten it to minimize. It's, so, that, that's a long-term plan. I'm not an engineer, I am definitely not a Metro or BNSF engineer, but that would be my understanding, that they would look to lengthen the one platform and then probably do some sort of capital improvement to adjust the other platform. Because you don't want people standing on a platform where there, there is no train because it's a safety hazard.
Okay. I'll take it as if we build these expensive stairs, that they're gonna stay.
Yeah, I think the height of this, the, the height of the platform wouldn't necessarily change unless the train cars, the trains that they use change, because when you step on and off the train, it has to be at a certain height, you know, if they make it taller or they make it shorter, where the stairs wouldn't match up to the platform, is that kind of what you're talking about? Then, this...
Well, they, Metro has been, or not Metro, BNSF has been building on top of and on top of the, the level and the pitch of the tracks in relationship to the road keeps increasing over time, year after year. So, I just want to make sure that if we're going to be investing in...
That we're not gonna have stairs nowhere.
Then they go to meet whatever is there or is going to be there. Just checking.
Regardless of which option the board goes with, where would the funding come from?
Parking lot fund, I believe the parking lot fund, go ahead.
That's what I was waiting for. So, parking lot fund, as of 2023, unaudited fund balance unassigned is $177,288. So, we would look to draw down on that unaside balance and also look for any grant opportunities we could take, take advantage of.
And the board was aware, when we initially got the agreement from MWRD as it relates to redoing this parking lot, that the parking lot fund was going to go in the red. But it was a unique opportunity, so essentially, parking lot fund is borrowing money from the general fund to, to be repaid as their revenues come in. So, it's more of a balance sheet item, but ultimately, this is an expense that must be paid by the parking lot fund.
Would someone like to make a motion or give us direction?
Do we need a motion?
Just give a direction.
Direction.
Well, I think, along with trustee Clarity, my direction would be to go with option three.
Three.
Three. Trustee Evans?
Three. Three.
We have, we have consensus.
Burke will begin working on the bid and we'll get you a proposal and project and hopefully, in a voting bid in short order to get the project started.
Next on the agenda is green electricity discussion, clerk Saul.
Good evening, I'll try to keep things brief. So, this has to do with the village-wide supply of electricity. We're gonna cover a few different things, no final action. Will be needed just some staff, direction of staff on a couple of things. So, first, I wanted to go over the village's electric aggregation program. So, for those of you who don't know what that program is, the village began the program in 2012, following approval of a referendum. It has allowed the village to aggregate all resident and small business electricity accounts and negotiate a fixed supply rate. So, some key features of that program means that we generally have gotten reduced rates through higher buying power. The electric supply options have offered green energy alternatives than your standard ComEd brown power. And actually, all of the village's aggregation agreements to date since 2012 have included that green power. Aggregation programs are also opt-out programs whereby residents are automatically enrolled into the program, but they are able to opt out at any time. So, as part of the village board's approval of a 12-month agreement with Dynegy Energy Services last year, they asked that we provide a little pre-update to approving another aggregation renewal, which will come before the board at the June meeting, where we'll get bids from suppliers and the board will be able to choose the rate, the green energy option, and so forth. An example of those type of bids is included in your packet from last year. So, but they all, the board also requested information on alternatives to electric aggregation, of which the main option is community solar. So, an alternative to aggregation, it offers individuals the ability to obtain the benefits of having solar panels on their home without actually having to install them on their property. But similar to that, subscribers to a community solar program would generate net metering credits on their monthly electric bills, so they'd get a credit on their bills each month. However, unlike an aggregation program, this is an opt-in program, and there would likely be a waitlist to join. While community solar and electric aggregation programs are not mutually exclusive, meaning you can run both at the same time, individual, people who opted only to do community solar would not contribute towards the village's status as an EPA green power community, where the village currently stands at number two in the nation for total percentage of electricity used that is green power. So, just a couple of things to weigh when, when speaking of community solar, and there's a lot of more information that goes into that, but that's a little just crash course. Also, part of this discussion has to do with just village-wide supply of electricity. So, for the accounts that the village does pay for each month, which include various traffic lights and our pump stations, most of them are currently just with ComEd's traditional brown power. But if the board would like staff to explore green energy alternatives to those accounts, we can, we can do that. So, three items that we're requesting direction on tonight, but not final action, would be whether we want to continue the aggregation program, meaning that bids would come in front of the board at the June meeting. You're not committing to anything tonight. You would be able to choose not to go forward with aggregation if that's what the board desired in June. Unfortunately, we have, when the bids come in for that June meeting, a decision has to be made on one of the bids or not at all due to the timing. A price for a fixed electric rate is only valid for 24 hours. The second item is whether the board is interested in pursuing a community solar program, and if so, if that would be in addition to or in lieu of the aggregation program. And then, three, like I mentioned before, whether the board is interested in converting our existing commercial accounts for streetlights and pump stations to green energy. This would have no impact on residents, it's just more of a village operations thing. Also, present tonight with us is the village's aggregation consultant, who has been working with us since 2012, Sharon Durling. She'll be able to answer any questions trustees may have on aggregation programs or community solar and what that would entail. Also, up here is a little report from the village board's, or the village's previous aggregation contract from 2020 to 2023, just kind of showing the environmental impact the contract has had for the village. So, Sharon, I don't know if you had anything else to say.
Thank you, resident trustees. In addition to that performance, I'm just gonna do a little shout out. If you're not feeling great about yourself tonight, according to, you know, a number of polls and organizations that report, Illinois ranks number one. Sometimes it's followed by a negative, but in this case, number one in the nation in terms of, you know, green power, and it's driven by what happened in 2007 and 2009, the freedom to choose your own electric supplier. So, aggregation has driven the consumption of green energy in the state, and you know where you are. I'm gonna say, I, we are not aware of another municipal entity in the state of Illinois that has retained 100% green power since you started it in the summer of 2012. So, I just gotta do a little, like, you know, it's kind of amazing your small town's making an impact. So, that aside, we can make it fairly simple. Maybe I'll start a little bit on community solar, just to say, community solar, there's something to be wrote, clear about that. When gener, electricity, renewable electricity is generated, two things are generated. The actual electrons come through your outlet, and then separately is the intrinsic value of the green energy. So, let me be real clear about something that might not be real clear. Community solar is great, we support it, we offer that, recommend you, you know, take a look at that. But it's something that residents sign up for and they contract directly with the supplier. The village doesn't, the village is essentially a marketing arm or, you know, a supporter suggesting this is legitimate and recommend it. But the renewable energy credits aren't a part of that, so you can't even say, according to the EPA, this isn't Sharon, you can't say, "I own the green power," because that is sold separately to the Illinois Power Agency. I don't know if I made that clear when we talked about it today. So, you don't own the green power, but it's still, you're, you're consuming from full, the sun hitting photovoltaic cells, and that's a great thing. The renewable energy credits are owned and purchased by the IPA, and that goes into the, ComEd has to own that. And that recent legislation, CJA, CJA indicates that we're supposed to be at 50% renewable energy credits recs in 2040. We're a long way from that. So, it's just a little backstory on community solar. I know there've been questions about, it's not available for aggregation yet. I mentioned that a year ago. So, there's that, and I'll stop there for a minute because it was a lot and it's late. Any thing, and then I'll just briefly go on aggregation, I can make that simple too.
Any questions? Please proceed.
Okay. It, it can be simple in, I think it's June 6th, it will bring some bids to the community. I'll tell you what the basic options are. You can cut up a lot of different ways, but you could, you know, reject all contracts and not have an aggregation program. That's certainly an option. Two, you could do what many other communities do. You're Riverside, you're not many other communities, but many communities do a ComEd price match program. They have a small percentage green energy. There's zero rate risk for residents, they never pay a penny more than ComEd, but the benefit is you retain your EPA green power partnership. You've been at 100%, if you'd like to stay at that 100%, likely, you'll see fixed prices at quite a bit of a premium to the ComEd rate. We'll know what that is, and we can, can talk about that June 6th. There's a couple of ways to slice that too. So, in the program, we do the ComEd, it's easy because you receive the benefit of green power and there's no rate risk. Or you can continues, you have at a, at a bit of a premium to be on the EPA list, but it's, I gotta keep this simple because it can get complicated. You can have 5%, I'm gonna call them highest quality EPA credits, and 95% less shiny, I'll say, older generation facilities. And that will be a little less expensive than if you were to go all 100% highest quality. So, I just kind of want to make that difference to you. You could have, and, you know, 5% or do 100% with all the highest quality, where you would be on the EPA list, but you would drop down from number two, or you can stay at... So, I want to make that clear. And then, I'm gonna back up a little bit and say, your current rate is 7.571 cents per kilowatt hour. I stood here last year and did some quick calculations, tried to be super conservative. It might be an overage of $15, $18 per month. And it turns out that it's less than $5 premium to the ComEd rate per average household total. So, I'm glad I was super conservative, but that's really small. And here's a crazy thing, this afternoon, we found out the ComEd rate for next month. Your residents are gonna save money next month. The ComEd has this crazy, it's priced spiked up this afternoon, I got the report, 7.9, you're paying 7.5, so you're hitting it all, on all fronts, accidentally or we'll say purposely. Saving money for the month of May, it's kind of one-off, it probably won't happen again, and 100% green. I'll stop. I'll stop.
Thank you.
Any?
So there were three items you were asking for direction. Should we take those one at a, at a time?
Yeah.
What was the first one?
The first one had to do with the aggregation program. So simple, you guys want to see bids at the June meeting to renew the aggregation program? Or do you have any questions about how the bid process works that Sharon just went over?
Trustees?
I would say yes. Yeah, nor that many.
Yeah.
No comments.
Yes, we want to see bids. Any questions about that process or?
If I may interrupt, you, here's your opportunity to say, "Well, Sharon would like to see 50% green or 25% green." You can slice it any way you like. You might just want to go 0, 5, 50, 100, keep it fairly simple.
Are we able to do that when we get bids?
No, we need to get, we need to tell the suppliers exactly what we're looking for. So we, we can ask for a whole menu. There's-
Yeah.
There's no loss in asking for anything you want in terms of-
So we need to give direction tonight on whether we go 100% or not?
Well, I would, it's pretty simple. I would suggest, I would suggest just choose, keep the options simple, 0, 5%, 50, or 100. And the money, the rate differential isn't going to be enormous. You don't need to, you know, have a menu of 29, bad analogy, slices of pie, you could have, you know, three different choices of pie.
I have a question.
Yes, trustee.
Last time around, we only had one choice that was 100% green. Is that because we didn't ask for more 100% green choices?
Let me check.
I believe it was the only company that submitted a bid for 100% green.
Good question. I have that in front of me. We did ask for 25% also. We received bids for 0, 5%, 25%, and 100%. That's what we asked for.
Right, but we only received one for 100%.
Yes, and they, they provided it in a 12-month, a 24-month, and a 36-month. So that's standard what we've requested.
But this time around, if we ask for multiple bids of 100% over one, three, and five years, for example, could we get more than one bidder?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question, it's-
So, yeah, so I think I understand it.
Can you restate my question?
So we did, we did ask that last year. It's just companies opted not to bid on 100%. It wasn't financially feasible for them to provide a bid for 100% green. So the only company that did was Dynegy Energy, and they gave us a 12-month, 24, 36, and we chose the 12 because we're like, we'll wait.
We received the bids from Energy Harbor and MC Squared for 100% as well.
Oh, so there was one more as well? Okay. And, but they were, they were more expensive than Dynegy.
So we chose the lowest.
Yes.
So we did receive more than that.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I wasn't looking at the bid table.
All right. I, I only recalled the one, but I guess that was more than enough.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah, no, no, that's good.
Need to understand the question, I wasn't catching. Thank you.
So-
We can do as last year and offer, you know, a little menu.
I would think that's what we want to do, or?
I would agree.
I think a menu would be informative.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
Second?
Second thing is whether the board would be interested in pursuing a community solar program, and if so, if they would want it to be in addition to or in lieu of the aggregation. Obviously, we decided we want to continue aggregation for now, and this doesn't need to be decided tonight. This is more of just kind of, do we want to explore community solar in the future? We would recommend, like, we won't, we won't have community solar bids at the June meeting because it would, we would recommend not doing so to confuse residents. We don't want to throw aggregation and-
Right.
...community solar at the same time in the mail to them. So we would do it, you know, six months after the aggregation program's renewed. But just kind of getting the board's thoughts on, on that.
I would like to see it in addition to the aggregation.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well. I think it offers many, many potential benefits, but I also see that continuing with a rec aggregation program is absolutely prudent, you know, in the immediate few, next few years.
And the third item?
Whether the board would be interested in converting the village's existing commercial electric accounts, which would be a few and far between for our pump stations and streetlights, to green energy. Similar, we would request bids for, for these, and we would request traditional power bids, which we currently have, and, and green energy bids.
Yes, I would like to see that.
Yes.
Figured as much, so.
Do you remember why they weren't included back in 2012?
I can respond to that. By law, by regulation, that is, they're too large to be included in electric aggregation. So, good question.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, I really appreciate your enthusiasm, especially at this time of night. You've been here all night and you've done a great job and brought your enthusiasm, so thank you.
Well, I'm thinking about my gym class at 7:00 tomorrow morning, so, I don't know. Excited. Thank you, trustee Cos.
So I think you have direction.
We're good.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
And thanks for your patience and sticking around. Last item on the regular agenda, resolution approving and authorizing the village manager to enter into a repair refurbishment agreement with Seagrave Fire Apparatus, Inc., for the refurbishment of the 2001 Seagrave aerial truck, and authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order or orders regarding same in an amount not to exceed $400,000. Director Buckley.
Thank you very much, President Pollock, members of the village board, manager Francis. A few months ago, I was in front of the board talking about this very item. My hope was that I was going to have a year to plan this and put this on our 2025 CIP. Unfortunately, this vehicle was involved in an accident at our station number two, and as a result, had to be brought up to the manufacturer, Seagrave Fire Apparatus up in Clinville, Wisconsin, which is in far northern Wisconsin, which is where the vehicle is currently at right now. So while it was there, when it got brought in, when the manufacturer looked at this vehicle, they said, "This vehicle is an excellent candidate for a refurbishment," because I had already started the talks with them prior to the accident happening. So they had the opportunity then to really get into this vehicle and inspect it. They came up with the, the pricing for refurbishment. And as you can see, you know, I talked about buying a new vehicle versus refurbishing this current one. It is currently in our CIP budget for 2027, and the price is 1.750,000 dollars. That's kind of at today's pricing. We've talked to the manufacturer, what's the cost of a new one now? We've actually talked to several manufacturers, and for a basic ladder truck, it's about 1.1 million, up to $2 million. And it's taking about two to three years to get them built. So as I told the board the last couple of months ago, I think it's very prudent of us to look at this refurbishment, where we're going to get about another 10 to 15 years of service life out of this vehicle. This vehicle is what's considered a quint. It has five functions. It's got the main ladder, it's got pumping capability and a water tank with 500, over 500-gallon tank capacity, it's got firefighting hose, and it's got ground ladders. So it has all the essential things we utilize for firefighting, but the biggest part and the most important part is that 100-foot ladder that's on top of that vehicle. This vehicle is a 2021, or I'm sorry, 2001 vehicle, so it's 23 years old right now. Most fire vehicles last between 20 and 30 years, but due to this refurbishment, I think we can get definitely at least 10 years, probably 15 years out of it. It is very important to our community. We do have some bigger buildings, we have some bigger houses with setbacks, so the vehicle is utilized for those purposes. The department does take very good care of this vehicle, which is why when it went up to the manufacturer, they said it's definitely a very good candidate for this refurbishment, where they go through the entire vehicle and basically, I don't want to say make it new, but they make it almost new again. The only thing that's probably going to stay on there that isn't going to get touched are the tires, because the tires aren't at all either at this point. But they, they do go through the entire vehicle, and anything that needs to be repaired gets repaired, painted, and makes it look new again. So we have met with directors of ALA, finance directors of ALA, to review the financial capability and capacity of whether we're able to do this, and if we could get this completed in this fiscal year of 2024. She did say we would be able to do that.
Thank you.
Resolution, you want to motion on this? I think that's a good-
Yes, I believe that would be appropriate.
If the board is comfortable with making the motion this evening.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, I'll give the second to trustee Evans. Any discussion on the motion?
This is a no-brainer.
Yep.
And thank you, Director Buckley and staff, for grabbing this opportunity. Row call, please.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cos.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marchauska.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, thank you. Trustee reports. Trustee Marchauska, quick summary on C4.
Quick summary on C4, well, I would almost turn this over to Ashley because she's handling the biggest component of news with respect to our activities here.
So, good evening, I'll keep it brief. In the packets memo is just a quick summary of our activities to date. The C4 team is continuing to plan and organize events. One of them coming up on May 11th is our global big day, which we're celebrating migratory bird activity, and have all kinds of fun events planned for the community that day, mostly in the morning, so more information is on our village website and continues to get updated. The biggest component of what we're working on is that we did release the RFP for development of our climate plan. We received several interested firms that have indicated that they intend to provide a proposal for that, so we're waiting until May 6th, when those are supposed to be delivered, and we'll review them at that point and bring another update to the village board after, after we've reviewed some of those things. So in that term, we're just sort of waiting, and we'll provide additional updates as we progress.
And we will have that public meeting of the C4 group the last Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM at the Riverside Public Library.
Thank you. Yes.
The other trustee reports.
I have a few things.
Yes, thank you.
So this Saturday, the United Columbus will host their annual pasta dinner, and that will be from 4:30 to 8:00 at St. Mary's Church. It's $20 per person, and they will have auctions and some other good stuff happening. The Lions Club will host its annual chicken dinner on Sunday, the 21st, from 12:00 to 5:00 at Township Hall. That is also $20 per person. Also, the Lions Club has announced that Diane Saragoli is this year's recipient of the Biljansky Distinguished Citizen Award. So if you do see Diane, please congratulate her, and anyone who wants to attend a dinner meeting where she will be presented that award can do so by contacting the Lions Club, which is going to be on May 21st. On April 27th, the River Rats will be doing their spring cleanup on, they'll be by Hoffman, by the Hoffman Bridge on 9 o'clock, and will have garbage bags, gloves, et cetera, until about noon o'clock, until noon that day.
Thank you. The other trustee reports. We do have need for a brief executive session and to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee or legal counsel. The board will not reconvene and no final action will take place. I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. Thank you, trustees, thank you to the public and staff for enduring a long meeting. Sometimes Riverside business of the village demands it. Clerk Soul, please call a roll for adjournment.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cos.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marchauska.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.